I would like to call the Tuesday, November 5th, 2013 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarde, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
That is correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. I don't think we have any presentations tonight, so Mr. Hoynes, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Begin my report this evening on, just a reminder, if you didn't see the email that I sent you last week on the recent new developments, you might want to read that over, and if you have any additional questions, it's kind of a year-to-date summary of the developments in Papillion, and that things are really picking up at a very rapid pace, and we're processing those, I think, in an efficient manner, but the economy's looking pretty good in Papillion on that, and I can certainly discuss more specifics with that. One specific development that we've had several conversations on, the Bellino 96 Project at 96th and Cornhusker. Most recent update, city staff met with the Bellino team yesterday, and I would classify and say that we made what I think is significant process to moving that project forward to the full council for consideration. We anticipate if we can work the details out within probably the earliest 30 to outside 60 days, we can get that project up for your consideration. Legislative, well, we're doing a lot of work right now, and there's really three key issues that we're concerned about and watching in the legislature. The first one, we are working through the United Cities to introduce legislation that would enhance the communication cooperation between local municipalities and the Department of Natural Resources on the process for issuing well permit. As you're well aware, there's been a lot of confusion and inconsistencies with our own Wellhead Protection Act and what they state, the type of information they provide us, and we're trying to close that loop, and that's going to take a legislative change for us to close that, and so Senator Smith has agreed to sponsor that bill, and the United Cities has voted to support that. Mayor Black and I both have reported on the Tax Modernization Committee that's been hearing, holding, conducting public hearings throughout the state from Scottsburg to Omaha the last couple of months. They've concluded all of their public hearings, the committee has, and I think there's 15 or more senators on that committee. They've met an executive session one time and have not come out with any findings yet, but our lobbyist reports that they will come out in December with a preliminary set of findings, and they anticipate something of some type in the legislative session that begins in January. Now, it's a short session coming up this year, it's a 60-day session, but there's really not many specifics. Along that line, the Omaha Chamber of Commerce hosted a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they're interested in working with government on the issue of LB 775 and Nebraska Advantage are two incentive programs that are awarded and administered by the state. You may recall very recently that the concerns municipalities have is, we don't have any idea that the state has awarded these incentives to prospective business until well after the fact. The one that's made the news is where the city of La Vista received a deduction in their sales tax revenue of $2.5 million that they didn't know was out there. And so the Omaha Chamber is meeting with several mayors and elected officials here to try and help us resolve that concern. Concluding my report, Mr. Mayor, this evening, by all of you, at least the council members should have a flyer at your desk. You can read through that. That's a fundraiser for a, actually, the child of a city employee, Jameis Hofseth. His father, Sean, works in the building department's workforce for several years. His young son has a very, very rare condition. I think there's four children in the world that have this condition, and the formula that he uses, they quit making, and it's his only form of food. He has a food allergy, effectively, and so they're running into a lot of issues as a family, and so the city staff has decided to come together, and certainly it's not just a city function. Anybody in the crowd, if you're interested, there's this flyer on the backside here. I think the date's November 15th, Friday. They're having a fundraiser for Sean, Robin, and it's his wife and Jameis, their three-and-a-half-year-old son, so certainly appreciate the support we could get in helping that family. There's true need there for that. Concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is Item D1. Ordinance 1674, An Ordinance to Amend the Official Zoning Map of the City of Papillion Adopted by Ordinance Number 1606 by Changing Boundaries of the Zoning Map of the City of Papillion in accordance with Section 205-32 of the Papillion City Code to Rezone Certain Real Property Within the Zoning Jurisdiction of the City of Papillion, Sarpy County, Nebraska, Legally Described as Tax Lot 18 in the Southeast Quarter of the Southwest Quarter of Section 25, Township 14 North, Range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, Generally Located at 11050 South 66th Street, from Agricultural AG to Community Commercial CC, and to Provide for an Effective Date. Is there a council member that will introduce?
Motion.
Introduced by Councilman Gaines. Next is Item F1. Resolution R130158, A Resolution to Approve Management Exempt Salary Ranges. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R130158?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? See no council discussion, but I will make one comment because the question does come up each year, just of the process. When the budget was approved, that provides the funding mechanism for raises, and that's already done, and we're into the new fiscal year. Then what we do is a market study to understand where the ranges of salary should be. That's the action being taken tonight, and then now that the funding's approved, and then assuming that this is approved, that establishes the ranges, then the normal HR evaluation process will place people in those ranges based on the approved budget. So tonight is the placement of the ranges. Do we have a mo—oh, we had council discussion. Please vote. Motion passes. Next is Item F2. Resolution R130169, A Resolution to Approve an Application Submitted by the American Legion, HBOSR 32, to Add an Outdoor Premises to Their Class C Liquor License. I believe we do have a representative with us. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R130169? Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
I got it.
Second by Councilman Stube. Proponents? I believe the applicant's here. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Next is Item F3. Resolution R130172, A Resolution to Approve a Private Well Supply Well Permit for Hillcrest Country Estates Located at 6082 Grand Lodge Avenue. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R130172? Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Jolene Roberts. Excuse me, I lost my voice. Can't put my glasses on, too. I'm Jolene Roberts, and I'm the President and CEO of Hillcrest Health Services. We invested in the property at Hillcrest Country Estates at 60th and 370 over five years ago, and this is about an $80 million investment into the city of Papillion. And when I found out that the wells we've had on this property for over five years were being shut down, I was quite a bit taken back, and upon research and understanding what's happened, I have to go through this process to basically ask the city council to give us approval to use the wells that have been in place since 2007. We acquired the property in 2007 for the betterment of the aging population of Papillion, a community that will encourage Papillion citizens to remain living in Papillion and encourage others to work in Papillion. We're going to have nearly 350 aging people that are going to live on this property by the time this Grand Lodge property is completed, in about two years. This property is a significant asset to the city of Papillion, and once it converts from SID to city property, it's going to be thousands and thousands of dollars of tax revenue for the city. When we created the master plan in 2007, that included a site irrigation due to the amount of greenery we had in this property. You see, there's several acres of greenery. We didn't want a concrete jungle for the people that live here. Frankly, the average age is going to be about 80 years old. We even designed the entire property so that it is fully accessible. That's over 35 acres. So there was a lot of planning that went into this and a lot of desire to have greenery for the people who live there. The master plan was current and approved by this council in 2007. At that time, the master plan called for the wells to provide irrigation in the pond. If you've been out there, you see that the pond is quite lovely. The city has been on the property several times since 2007, and no one had indicated to me or my representatives that the wells were not allowed. And it wasn't until this year that I got notification from the city that said the wells that have been out there since 2007 are no longer allowed. And I, quite frankly, I didn't understand, and upon research, what was suggested to me is that by selling water to the property, it generates revenue for the city, and that the primary reason that the wells would be closed was so that the city could generate more revenue. And so we did some calculations of how much that revenue is, which of course is a loss to the people that I take care of, and based on the last three summers of irrigation, it would cost our folks nearly $80,000. Titan Springs, that particular SID was in financial despair when Hillcrest decided to invest in it, and when we decided to invest, we were really hoping that the landscaping could be fed by the wells. This property's going to be consuming thousands and thousands of dollars of water from the city. We're going to be occupying over 350 people. So we see it's a great investment, and we see that we're participating in the selling of the water to the city. We're going to be paying thousands in taxes. You're going to see from testimony from Larry Jobin and from Jeff Lake that this well maintaining is within the legal right of the organization, is going to have no negative impact on the environmental studies of which Mr. Lake can testify to. So I'm asking the city to please allow the existing wells for irrigation. They've been in place for over five years. The city and the city officials have been aware of this for over five years, and no one has said a thing to me. There is no negative impact on the environment, and frankly, I think that's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents?
I have a question.
Mr. Glover.
How many wells are there now?
There's two.
And you're asking for a permit to maintain two? Is that it?
Yes, I'm asking for the allowance to maintain the ones that have been on there since 2007.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evenings, members of the council. Jeff Lake with Olson Associates. Keep it brief here a little bit. A lot of technical data's been prepared in reviewing these wells, and it's been turned into Mr. Thompson, and city's reviewed those documents. Just kind of a brief summary of what we have done. The two wells that we're referring to back in 2007 were tested. Flow rates determined that could be supported by the wells, and in 2008, the first of those two wells had a pump physically installed. That pump was designed for 45 gallons per minute. In our analysis that we've done, we've assumed that both wells would have wellheads installed, so the second one would come online, which is planned or hoped to be constructed here with the Grand Lodge, which is currently under construction. And both of those wells were analyzed to be run at the same time, pumping their 45 gallons per minute at 12 hours, which is a significant increase from what they'll actually be run. Right now, the one well that's being used for pond reclamation and irrigation on the site runs four to five hours a couple times a week, and in all of our analysis, again, we've assumed 12 hours, both of them running full blast the entire time. So I think our analysis is very conservative, and in that analysis, we have a radius of influence of about 1,385 feet, which does pick up some of the properties to the north side of Cedar Dale. Those properties are acreage-style developments that have their own wells and have their own septic systems. We couldn't get a lot of data on those wells. They were not registered wells, nor do they need to be on that application, and assumably grandfathered into the situation right now. And our analysis, again, conservative, everything running full blast, there's a potential drawdown of somewhere between half a foot and maybe three feet at worst-case scenario of those closest wells. So our professional opinion, and I haven't heard anything from the city that discounted those opinions, is there's really no impact to those wells. Additionally, the septic systems that are on the project to the north of us, the Cedar, north of Cedar Dale, are on a different layer of soil. We are pumping from a layer of bedrock, and these are in a layer above that, so any of the septic systems have very little, if any, risk of having the septic systems draining down through the bedrock into the stratim where we're pulling our groundwater from. So with that, I'm certainly available for any technical questions you might have on the matter.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of Hillcrest Development. As you heard tonight, there are two wells. They were both installed in 2007. One currently is in use for the make-up recovery for the pond and also is for irrigation. The second well that is installed but not necessarily in use, between the two of them, they will actually irrigate about 19.92 acres of ground, and as Jolene said, there was a lot of planning that went into the master plan to provide quite a bit of green space for the residents of this particular community. And one of the things that you want with green space is for it to look green, of course, and nice. So again, you heard that the wells were installed in 2007. The effective ordinance that was in place in 2007 at the time these wells were installed was ordinance number 1503, and that ordinance was adopted September 4th, 2007. And what that allowed is that allowed for decorative pond make-up recovery and for irrigation for land greater than two acres. In this particular case, it was almost 20 acres at the time. In January, on January 2nd of 2013, you had your new ordinance that became adopted by this council, and that was ordinance number 1658, which made it unlawful to construct and install a well without a permit, and you really couldn't do it if you were within 1,000 feet of the municipal water system. In this particular case, we were within 1,000 feet of the municipal water system. But it's interesting to note that ordinance 1658, in one of the sub-sections under that ordinance, which is 198-3, does allow for illegal non-conforming use to continue after the passage of this ordinance 658. So what happened here is, as long as there's no negative impacts to the well system, I think, which you heard from Olson and Associates and their people who did the studies, that there were no negative impacts with respect to the two wells that are being proposed here for permit. And so based upon that, had this well company obtained the permit when they should have back in 2007, this would have been illegal non-conforming use, and these wells would have been allowed to be in existence. But for that problem, we wouldn't be here today. We would have a lawful, two lawful wells. And so really what we're asking for is, there's really been created a hardship here based upon the fact that the permits were not obtained when they should have been, unbeknownst to Hillcrest, and Jolene certainly didn't know that they were not applied for. So what we've got here is a hardship, and I guess the interesting part about that is the hardship really falls on the residents and the elderly people within this community because eventually, you know, they pay for the costs of these types of amenities, and water is one of those. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and we respectfully request that you approve these two permits. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'm going to ask for some council discussion, but I just want to make sure we're really clear on proponent, opponent, and what's being approved and not approved. The resolution that had a motion, a second, is to approve one of them for the make-up and recovery and deny the other one and not allow irrigation. So that's the motion. We called for proponents, and they spoke, but what they're advocating for is actually having bo—I believe the position is you're advocating, I want to represent it correctly, you're advocating for both wells to be approved for both recovery and irrigation. That's what you're advocating for.
That's correct.
The motion, but the motion that is on the floor is for approval of one for recovery and denial of the second one, and that came out of the committee. So to start off the council discussion, it did go to committee. Mr. Stube, did you want to clarify anything or give committee comment behind?
Well—
Recommendation? Because I just want to make sure we're really clear on what the motion is and what's being advocated for and what the vote, what the result of the vote will be.
Yeah, we met as four members of the committee to discuss this, and after long discussion, there was a vote taken by the members of the committee to essentially deny, which has led us to the recommendation, I think, that's in the council resolution tonight.
Okay. Mr. Mumgarde, you had your microphone on. Did you even want to make comment?
Well, I guess now I'm a bit confused. Did the committee say that one well's okay, but two wells is not?
Yeah. The committee is saying that, consistent with what we've allowed in some other areas, that we would allow a well for pond make-up, which has been done, I think, in at least two of now maybe three locations, and so because of that, we've allowed it in those locations. We figure that we would be consistent with this location also, so essentially allow the one well for make-up.
What's the other well?
Larry Jobin, yes, irrigation for the 19.92 acres around the Grand Lodge and also the other areas, which is the cottages and the villas as well.
Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I do have a comment. Something that was said bothers me. Apparently, somebody may have conveyed the information to the applicant that the reason we control these is so that we can make more money by selling people water. If that was said, I think that is entirely wrong. I don't think that should be anybody's consideration, and it is certainly not going to be my consideration as to whether you do or don't get any wells. In my view, we control these because it's a health, safety, and welfare issue that when there is a community water system available, it is best for everybody that that water system be used, and that we not have willy-nilly people drawing water out of the system, drawing, digging wells and using water either for drinking or for otherwise, that is not within the control and the health standards that have been set for our community. Otherwise, we're really not a community, and so I'm not paying any attention to whether this is going to make us more money or not, and if anybody told you that, I would say staff should at least understand that at least this council member does not agree with that.
Mr. Glover.
Is the one well capable of doing everything that you want to do?
Just one quick clarification, because I want to be careful that we understand again. When you say everything, what they're advocating for is both replenishment or make-up and recovery and irrigation. The motion is for make-up recovery, not irrigation. So when we say all, I want to make sure we're very clear on what the two are.
Jeff Lake, thought I might put an exhibit up here to kind of show the two wells and the locations and kind of aid in the discussion. Insert joke here.
Are you on that?
Regarding the two wells, there were two of them, as Jolene mentioned, back in 2007 as part of our, the analysis that was done of what was needed, what we felt was needed for the pond recovery and also for the irrigation of 20 acres of turf grass. And you could probably get by, we have not analyzed that, you might be able to get by with one well, but you're going to be running it more. Our thought was to have two wells in two different locations to sort of minimize the amount of piping necessary and not run those wells as long to irrigate that much turf grass and then handle that pond recovery. As Mayor Black had mentioned, we are looking for not only the pond reclamation, which it's being, the single well is being used for right now. This well in the kind of north-central part of the project is in service, and there was a well drilled kind of on the west side here adjacent to creek that bisects the site, well drilled, but no well had installed or put into service yet. It was tested, it was through the process, and was part of our analysis. The well that is in service and operating in this location is handling the turf grass irrigation of the cottage facility and also of the villa single-family home facility that they've got part of their campus, and it's also handling the pond recovery in the middle of the project. Here's kind of a blow-up view of that where the pond is in the middle location. Sorry for the Band-Aid here, by the way, knife accident. And the well was located up and through here, and the part that's under construction, the Grand Lodge is in this location, which that second well was closer to and was hopeful to accentuate the existing use of the wells for both irrigation and pond reclamation.
Mr. Ingberg.
Well, just to remind council, although I certainly understand the request to have a well for irrigation, like Mr. Mumgarde, to me, it has nothing to do with revenue. It has to do with having some semblance of control over wells being put in place throughout the community, and if you recall, the most recent example I could think of is Sac Federal Credit Union. We allowed them a well for pond recovery, but we denied the request to irrigate their property with it. So I think when we discussed it as a committee, I won't speak for the chairman, but I think that's one of the issues we looked at, is being consistent. It'd be difficult to approve irrigation at one location with a well and deny it previously to another one. And I think that was some logic to that.
Mr. Mumgarde.
Okay, I'll turn back to Mr. Stube again. I guess what did the committee think, if anything, about Mr. Jobin's argument that if permits had been applied for back in 19, what, 19, 2007, as they were supposed to be, that both of these wells would have been approved, and so these are effectively grandfathered wells? Is that, do you think that's accurate with respect to that second well?
I'm not sure that we got into that detail with regard to whether they would be grandfathered or not. Again, we looked at it more from the perspective of, one, that these are unregistered wells, so they definitely have to come back to the city for consideration. Two, definitely, it's a health, safety issue, and three, again, to be consistent with what we've allowed in other situations, that we felt that, again, allowing for pond make-up was an acceptable use of that particular well that's currently in operation, but not for irrigation.
Mr. Hoynes.
Mr. Mumgarde, I'd point out, and rest of council, your consideration, in the staff report, under the background information, the first sentence reads, "At the time the well was drilled, Papillion City Code 195-18 provided, the drilling or use of a private well or wells within the zoning jurisdiction of the city is not authorized except by approval of the majority of those members either elected or appointed to the city council, the city of Papillion, and only upon certification by the Director of Public Works that the proposed private well complies with the city guidelines." So there was a requirement when they drilled that to come forward. The change simply clarified within 1,000 feet when we made that and did some other housekeeping things. So there was a requirement.
Well, and I guess I'm looking for clarification. For before the 2013 amendment, did we draw a distinction between pond make-up and irrigation? The only one I remember is up behind Walmart, and that's, I believe, pond make-up. You know, if we didn't draw a distinction between pond make-up and irrigation, and we would have given, or you would have gotten a permit for either one, then I guess you have a point. But if you wouldn't have gotten the irrigation one in 2007, then you're wrong.
Mr. Mumgarde, if I may, I think I can answer that question. The ordinance that you had in existence at the time the wells were installed, which was ordinance number 1503, it had a document that was attached to it that was called Proposed Permit Private Water Well System Requirements, and this is where we came up with the two items that would have allowed, in all likelihood, these two particular wells, and that's item number one and item number four. Item number one deals with irrigation wells for properties that have an excess of 2.0 acres of landscaped areas, and then number four was decorative pond make-up water. So what you have here is you had 20 acres of green space for irrigation, and then you also had the decorative recovery make-up for the pond. So those are the two items that we felt that we could come under, under the 2007 ordinances that were then changed and prohibited in 2013. So that's why we felt that we had a strong— So that's why we felt that we had a strong case for having the wells installed then and then would have therefore been grandfathered under the new ordinances.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Mumgaard?
Thank you.
Okay. Any other council discussion? Okay, I want to be really clear again to make sure that we're, we understand what the motions are and what's being advocated for. The motion on the floor that will be voted on is the approval of one well for recovery, not irrigation, and not approve the second one. So if there's a desire, and that motion's on the floor, so if there's a desire by the council or by a council member to allow for a vote of what's being advocated for, which would be both wells for recovery and irrigation, we would need an amendment to that effect to make to get that onto the floor. Mr. Mumgaard.
I will make that amendment. I think Mr. Jobin has a point there that I think back and I don't, you know, unless somebody can point out where we would have turned down a well for irrigation under the circumstances as he's pointed out, I don't see that we need to penalize them simply because they didn't get the well permit from us back in 2007. They did get it from the state, which points out one of the reasons why the state law needs to be changed. And as Mr. Hoynes has pointed out, that you are a victim, or were in 2007, a victim of the state of Nebraska's inability to work well with us. No pun intended. And that they just issue, they issue permits for water wells without consulting us, without paying any attention to whether it's within the city jurisdiction. And you're not the first one that we've encountered this with. So I'm going to look at you as more of a victim of the bureaucratic legislative snafu because you did get a permit, you at least went and asked somebody. And so I'm going to look at it that both wells are effectively grandfathered in and there's no reason to turn it down. So I would move to amend the resolution to authorize both of the requested wells.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Glover.
I got something to say. Correct me if I'm wrong, though, didn't we just go through this with SAC? We wouldn't allow SAC to have it for irrigation, so I think we're opening a can of worms here. Whether they got, whether they had those wells in there or not, who knows what would have happened in 2007. They may not, you guys might not have got approved for it. So yeah, it did slip through the blueprints, but again, we don't know what would have happened in 2007. I think, I think we're making a mistake by allowing this second well because if we do, then we might as well rewrite it for SAC too.
Mr. Ingberg wants to comment, but just procedurally, we've got a motion to amend with a second. Let's vote on the motion to amend. If that's accepted, then we'll have discussion on the motion as amended. If it fails, then we'll have discussion on the original motion. Does that make sense?
Well, except you can't comment on the motion that's on the floor, though.
Right. So we have a motion to amend that's been seconded. So the vote will be, do we amend the mo, do we accept the amendment? So we'll have discussion on that item. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I was going to make a comment about the amendment, but if I.
No, that's appropriate. Discussion on the amendment's appropriate.
My only, my conservative amendment is this. You know, I can't believe we're going to bring up chickens again. But we went through this back when we were talking about changing that ordinance. The folks that already had the animals were not in conformity at the time. And this council sat here, at least the majority of the council sat here and said, "You can't go back and make something right that was wrong to begin with." That's really what we're doing here. There was a process in place in 2007 and it wasn't followed. And now we want to go back and say, "Well, you didn't follow the process, but it's okay. We're going to make it right." And I understand, I understand your feeling behind it, Tom, I really do. But the problem I have with it, you know, the state registers wells, we really wasn't permitting them. And my problem is, we're, it's unfortunate, but we had ordinance in place in 2007, nothing's changed between now and 2013 except cleaning up the language. We want to say, "Well, we forgive that," but we don't know in 2007 what the council would have done at the time, if they would have come before us as they should have for that well. I mean, I don't know how many of us were on the council in 2007, but how do we know? And while I do sympathize with their need, I think you have to be consistent in addressing our situation with SAC and other things that have come before us where we've said before, we can't take something that was in a non-conforming status previously because now things have changed, we want to go back and make something that should have been done before okay. I don't think that's very consistent.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mr. Mumgaard.
See, I'd just simply say, well, okay, when I voted for the change in 2013, it had language in there about being grandfathered. And so it was my understanding that wells that were already in place were not being affected by that change in the ordinance. See, now we're bumping up into something that's just contrary to what I understood at the time I voted for that change in that this was a well that was in place and was being used. And so when I voted to have that grandfather clause in that ordinance, I felt that wells such as them were exempt from the change. And, you know, and all I'm trying to do is be inconsistent with what we did back in early 2013.
Any other council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Two yeas, six nays. Nays by council members Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg, Florence, and Gaines.
So the motion to amend fails, so we have the original motion on the floor, so we can continue council discussion on that. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is item F4, Resolution R13-0180. A resolution to approve a release of easement on Lot 1, Midland's Place, to facilitate a water main. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0180? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Mumgaard. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F5, Resolution R13-0182. A resolution to approve the site selection of a new splash pad at Eagle Ridge Park, introduced by Councilman Mumgaard. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0182?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Mumgaard?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Mr. Mumgaard.
I'm going to come up here and make a presentation as a. I'm getting to it. Good evening. My name is Tom Mumgaard. I live at 1216 Cork Drive in the beautiful city of Papillion and in the even better and more beautiful Ward 4 of Papillion. I am a resident of Ward 4 and, as you all know, a council member in Ward 4. And I'm going to come up here and make a presentation to explain why I think we should approve this resolution and end the seemingly never-ending debate about splash pads. As you all know, I've been a strong proponent of splash pads since 2007, and that's when we approved and built the splash pad that's currently in place up at Schwer Park in Ward 4. Since then, you've all been very patient and listening to me at both at budget time and other times in advocating for a second splash pad. Now, I've done that not to annoy you, but because when the Schwer Park splash pad was approved, the discussion centered around the idea that there would be more than one splash pad. And that was considered to be necessary to not create problems in the one that we had, that this was an amenity for parks and was not kind of a destination like a swimming pool. I made that representation to my constituents and I assured them that I would try, that that would not be the only splash pad in Papillion. And so since then, I've been trying to keep that promise. But as you know, Schwer Splash Pad is suffering from its own popularity. It experiences congestion, which makes it a lesser experience and speeds up the deterioration. And so over the years, I've become convinced that congestion and overuse can only really be reduced by more splash pads, that there's really a constant number of people who are going to attend, go enjoy a splash pad. And so you're really not adding to the numbers when you get a second splash pad, you're just dispersing the people. I've tried all other feasible remedies that I can come up with to address the Schwer Park issues. And so now we've come down to a situation where I'm convinced that the city, that the people of Papillion want that kind of water recreation and spending money on it, particularly Keno money, is a really good use of the money. And so I've been pushing for a second splash pad just to alleviate, you know, to, one, to make good use of Keno money, two, to provide the citizens what they apparently want, and three, to alleviate the congestion at Schwer, and four, to try to carry out what I told my people I would do. So since then, about every open space around town has been reviewed and most of them have been found inadequate for various reasons. I have, over the time, had criteria that I apply to determine what would be a good location for splash pad. And I've offered, I've given those to you, you're aware of that. By applying those criteria, I come up with two locations that I think are acceptable, two that are best. Eagle Ridge Park and Glenwood Hills Park. I brought those to your, that's why I brought those both tonight to your consideration. Told you several weeks ago, if you had any other options, let's bring them up. Nobody did, so apparently that's where we're at, that the two best spots are Glenwood and Eagle Ridge, or none at all. So I recommend that the Eagle Ridge Park location be given priority. And I'm going to show you which one it is because originally there were two locations that were considered there by the engineers. Let's see if this will work. Notice no Band-Aid? And here's what I call the eastern location, which is over next to the shelters and the playground. And here's what I call the western location. They're separated here by this drainage ditch that is a wooded area that has trees along the ditch. Basically, the Eagle Ridge Park has this very large, open area that would be acceptable for a location of a splash pad here, which would not interfere with any of the sidewalks. It would show, here we have some distances, that it would show it would be over 300 feet from the nearest house and 400 feet from this house. Obviously, all of these houses, there's this tree line here that would separate them. The splash pad, as proposed, would come with a restroom. This park is without a restroom, it certainly needs a restroom, those are things that are good in any park. The restroom would be, if this is the proposal, would be located over here by this western splash pad. It also has off-street parking, which is one of the issues that constantly comes up. You will note that in the engineer's estimate, there's money there to add, what I believe by my count, there's 15 parking spaces in here now. It would add another 20 parking spaces along here. There's acceptable space there for it to do that. So we would have, you know, 36 parking places there. Hopefully would alleviate any congestion or parking on the street. It has just one street, basically one block of houses that have to be passed to get there that you would expect most of the entrance, most of the traffic, or much of the traffic at least, would come off of 72nd Street. Or 66th Street, you're right. Now, here's a little closer look. See if I can get this. So what you have here is, here would be the parking and here would be the splash pad. Now, I'm not going to represent to you that that's the size of the splash pad, that's roughly two-thirds, half to two-thirds the size of the ones at Schwer Park. How big it would be is something we would have to work out later on. The restroom would be here. As you can see, the playground's over here. The engineer's estimate, which you have, includes money for that parking and includes here $60,000 for that restroom, which is, I think, an amenity that that park would benefit from whether there's a splash pad or not. Okay, now, there's one hurdle to get over. Eagle Ridge Park is not inside the city, so we don't have the ability, according to the city attorney tells us, that we don't have the ability to just decide there's going to be a splash pad there. We have to do that by agreement with the board of directors of that SID. Either that or we have to annex the area so that it becomes a city park. Well, annexation is inevitable. It isn't going to happen this year and frankly, I'm out of patience. So I'm not waiting for annexation. So I've reached out to the SID board and asked if they would achieve an agreement with the city, that the city would agree to build and maintain that splash pad, that parking lot, and that restroom in their park, and we would effectively lease that land from them. I've met with several of them and I'm pleased, very pleased, with their reaction. They seem to be very reasonable people and they've at least shown that they are willing to discuss that. They are not against the concept, but obviously there's details that have to be worked out. And, you know, we have to, we would have to reach an agreement, which we don't have tonight. But my discussions with them tell me that it is at least doable and we should at least explore reaching a partnership with this SID. But that board needs more time to have a meeting and present the agreement to their residents, so I can't tell you today whether we can or can't put a splash pad there. It's going to ultimately be up to the board. But I'm optimistic that an agreement can be reached. But on the other hand, I can understand why they don't want to work on it and have meetings if we're not going to approve it. So it's necessary for us to have our approval first before they move forward. So I recommend that we approve this location, approve this resignation, this resolution that designates Eagle Ridge Park, and then we will work with the board to develop an agreement and present it to them, which would approve construction and operation of that splash pad. City attorney has provided in your material kind of an outline of what that agreement would say and certainly if you wanted to discuss the details, I certainly would with you, but I'll skip over them for now. Okay, then I'll, let me outline my bigger plan because I really want, I don't want to keep pounding you about splash pads. So I want to know what, what as they call is the end game. If this resolution fails, I will move to approve this resolution. If it fails, then I will move on and I will move to approve the resolution next to it for a splash pad at Glenwood Hills at what I call the northwestern location, which is up tucked along the trees there. I'll speak to that if it's on the table. But if this is approved, I will then move instead on the Glenwood to indefinitely postpone a decision on Glenwood until we know whether Eagle's going to work or not. Because, and I would do that because I don't want to misrepresent to anybody whether I'm taking Glenwood off the table or not. I think Glenwood needs to stay on the table, so that's what I will do. And now in fairness, I'll continue to tell you what my end game is. If we can't agree to any location for a second splash pad, then I will do what I think needs to be done. And I will sometime this spring, before splash pad season begins, I will come in with a resolution to turn off the Schwer Park splash pad until a second splash pad is approved. And I don't do that with threat or, you know, revenge or retribution or anything. I do it for this reason, that I give up. If the council is going to adopt a policy that splash pads are inappropriate in parks near houses, then I give. That's our policy. But if that's the policy, then the Schwer Park splash pad is inappropriate. I made a mistake and I have to fix it. I represented to my constituents that that splash pad would not be the only one. If it is going to be the only one, I'm obligated to try to turn it off. I hope we don't get to that point. So I'm working hard to give alternatives. I think Eagle Ridge is the best alternative and I will encourage you to vote for it. Thank you.
Mr. Mumgaard, just so it's clear, I don't think the resolution currently is clear that it's contingent upon the interlocal. Would you make a friendly amendment to that effect? Would you make a friendly amendment to that effect?
I'd be more than willing to do that, but I don't think it has to be. I think I would prefer just to have a straight-out, we approve it. And if for other legal reasons we can't get an agreement, it's still approved. I'll tell you why. Because then, as I say, annexation is inevitable. If annexation occurs, we have the approval of a splash pad. And unless somebody wants to come forward to bring that back up and negate that, we can go forward and build it. If we make it contingent upon their agreement, then you don't, then a little bit uncertainty of what happens when annexation occurs.
Appreciate it. We are proponents and opponents. Do we have any other proponents on Eagle?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brian Mensch. I'm the 1907 Franklin Circle in the Eagle Ridge subdivision, and I am the chairman of the SID board. As Mr. Mumgarth told you, we did make some preliminary contacts and answered, asked and answered questions here recently. Obviously, we, I cannot make representations that the board is in favor of, but we haven't met, we haven't had our public hearing yet. But we are in favor of entertaining the prospect of a splash pad. If an agreement can be reached, the details worked out, that'd be great. If not, so be it, but at this point in time, we are at least willing to accept the approach of the city and entertain those discussions and consider it.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Yes, my name is John Teft. I live at 1910 Windcrest Avenue, and I'm the clerk of SID 143. And there again, I just for another vote of confidence on that, based on tentative conversations that we've had with Mr. Mumgarth and Mr. Hoynes. I believe that we would be able to come to a resolve in favor of the splash pad.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion. Mr. Florence.
You know, I have not been a big fan of other site locations for splash pads, and don't believe Glenwood Hills is anywhere near a good consideration. I do think Eagle is a good location, for all the reasons Tom pointed out. And so, while I voted against splash pads in the past, I'd be inclined to vote for this one.
Any other council discussion? Ms. Klug.
Thank you. You know, I have never voted for a splash pad. It worries me extensively about retrofitting what I consider to be a destination amenity into a park. I did take the opportunity to go out to Eagle Ridge today. I was out there with Councilman Jaworski. We did some talking, we drove to both locations, we looked at both sides of the creek, how you would get in and out. And then I actually went out in the rain and got completely drenched and soggy wet out there today, walking the circle that Councilman Mumgarth showed, and just kind of looked over how much space is really there. I'm not a fast runner, I spent some time trying to jog from where the splash pad is to where some of the closest houses would be. And Councilman Mumgarth, I have to say, I think you have found one location that I would say yes. Yes, I am willing to say yes, as long as the SID works diligently with their citizens, make sure that the citizens that you're working with know what's going on, and that we reach an agreement we're all happy with. We may have found a great spot where we can actually retrofit a splash pad. So thank you for the continued effort, and all of the meetings you've had with me with my concerns over these, I appreciate that, too.
Any other council discussion? Mr. Ingberg.
Well, no one else has heard of it, mention it, but I do want on the record for Councilman Mumgarth's constituents to know that he has been more than diligent, and tried to live up to the promises he said he made to his constituents. He certainly has done a yeoman's job doing that. I don't think, I would hope that they recognize that, that you've worked very hard to live up to what you told them you would do. The problem I have with this one is, do I consider people at Eagle Hills part of the community? Absolutely. But the fact remains, I'm a little bit uncomfortable when we tell, when we tell Jerry Torresad out in the, that's doing a development west of Papillion, that he needs to set aside an area and put a splash pad in. Now, granted, the funding may not come out of Mr. Torresad's pocket necessarily, it's part of the SID development debt, but I do have some concern that, and I suggested that, that we do that, we start, if we're going to really want splash pads in neighborhoods, we should do it as SIDs develop, because that way, the people that are buying homes there know it's there, they know it's an amenity that they can expect, and also, the SID could get paid for it, rather than Keno money or taxpayer dollars or whatever money you use. So my problem is, I don't know what I say to somebody like, and I'm sure Mr. Mumgarth's attorney, he'll have an answer to this, but I don't know what I would say to Mr. Torresad if he came to me and said, well, wait a minute, you're telling me I have to put a splash, you're recommending I put a splash pad in one of my three developments out here, but yet you're turning around and doing the same thing in another SID, and you're funding it. I don't know if that's consistent, and I don't think it's fair.
Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, one nay. Nay by Councilmember Ingberg.
Motion passes. This next one will become interesting, I think. You're going to test Roberts' Rule of Order again tonight, I think. We have a published agenda, so we have an item we have to address. We have item F6, Resolution R13-0163, a resolution to approve the site selection of a new splash pad at Glenwood Hills Park, introduced by Councilman Mumgarth. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0163?
I would make a motion to indefinitely postpone the resolution.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Glover. Ms. Klug.
I would like to make a motion to amend Resolution R13.
I'm going to check, well, got to think of our process. The motion, the original motion was not made. The motion that was actually made was the motion to indefinitely postpone. So I think what we need is a substitute motion. Okay, go ahead and make a substitute motion.
I would like to make the substitute motion on Resolution R13-0163 to remove from consideration the Glenwood Hills splash pad location.
Okay, we have a substitute motion, second by Councilman Florence. Please vote on the substitute motion.
Shouldn't there be council discussion on that?
Well, that'll just be the two, oh, go ahead, yes, we will discuss this. The indefinitely did not have discussion, that would have had a vote. This one can have discussion.
Okay, I'll just point out what Luann, the conversation I've had with Luann on this, and I understand what her motion is, but I think, what I don't like about turning it down and doing it your way is because I think it raises expectations that are unreal. That when Glenwood Hills came up here several weeks ago, I heard people saying, well, this isn't fair. You turned it down a few years back, and we thought it was over. Now, I don't, you know, I don't agree with them. I can understand how maybe they might have gotten that impression, and I don't want to do that again. So if we have a resolution, and adopt a resolution that says it is removed from consideration, and people then believe that's the end of it, it will never be considered again, they've been misled. I don't want to mislead them. That's why I'm saying, no, we should just tell them the truth, that it remains option B. And whether it will or won't come up depends on what happens at Eagle. Because frankly, you know, and if Eagle falls apart, and we can't get Eagle, then anybody, including me, can bring this resolution back, and I would put it upon the very, two very good council members from that district to notify the people of Glenwood that the item's back on the table. The problem with adopting the resolution as proposed by Councilman Klug is that it raises the impression it's done, and it isn't. Because if Eagle falls apart, somebody, including me, could just put that resolution back on the agenda, and it's back up there. So I'm in favor of kind of the honesty in presentation. If the reality is that it is just generally postponed until somebody wants to bring it back, then let's call it that.
I'm going to make a, looking at procedure and Roberts' Rule, just to make sure we get everything appropriate. Mr. Mumgarth, you made your motion to indefinitely postpone, and then we had the substitute. I think what would have been appropriate is if we had the original motion to approve, that would have been on the floor, you make your substitute, then we could have had the amendment. I think that would have been the proper flow. So if you don't mind, I may ask you to withdraw yours.
Okay, I guess we ought to withdraw ours.
Would you withdraw your substitute?
I will withdraw my substitute.
Will you withdraw yours? Now, do we have a motion to approve Resolution R13-0163 as it was published, which is the motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Now, can you make your substitu-, your?
I have a substitute motion to indefinitely postpone the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
And then this is where I can amend.
Do you want to make your amendment?
Okay, motion to amend Resolution R13-0163 to strike the word approve and replace it with remove from consideration.
Do we have a second on the motion to amend?
Yes.
Please vote on the motion to amend. Voting on the motion to amend, if that's accepted, now we have a motion as amended that we can discuss.
This was a motion to amend.
Six yeas, two nays. Nay by Councilmember Mumgarth and Glover.
So the motion to amend passes, so what's on the floor is the motion is amended, which is to remove Glenwood from consideration. That's the discussion. Council discussion? I'm going to go ahead and call for proponents and opponents, and what the proponents are for is, what the motion is, is to remove Glenwood from consideration. I know we have a lot of people in the crowd, it's a hot topic, so I am going to limit proponents and opponents to three minutes. Proponents, anybody want to speak? See none? Do we have any opponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
My name is Mrs. Costin Yedda. I live at 2104 Maryland Drive, and I just wanted to make sure for the record to go ahead and turn in the petition that we, so I can give this to Eliza. Thank you. You know, we are very short-term. My personal reasons, in addition to the petition, which has 116 signatures from my neighbors, but my personal reasons for not wanting a splash pad at this site, I just feel it's very, first of all, unsafe for all the children that live in the neighborhood with all the additional traffic, and the way that the park sits, so many children ride their bikes and walk back and forth from the park throughout the day, and I just don't think that would be safe. My second reason is that the SAC Federal Credit Union Sprayground is located at the mall, it's very close to the park. The sprayground is large, it has parking, restrooms, and seating. The park has the only practice field in this area, and I can't send the children to go to the mall to play baseball, soccer, frisbee, or football, whereas they can, the smaller children can go to the mall for the sprayground. My third reason, from reviewing the Papillion Parks Plan, I feel like that the city should just follow their own parks plan, in which it states on page 65 that a splash pad should not be squeezed into a park space to the detriment of the character and open space quality of the park. A splash pad site should avoid traffic patterns that impact neighborhood streets, which in my opinion is exactly what would happen, that they would impact the neighborhood streets. And my final reason is, it's just an older neighborhood with mailboxes on both sides of the street, spaced apart evenly, and I just know that it would cause major problems for my personal mail and all my close neighbors, our trash pickup, and fire and ambulance services. So I appreciate letting me speak tonight, and I'd like to thank everybody for listening.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm Steve Vorus. I live at 2205 Corn Drive. I wrote this whole thing up here, and pretty much, Councilman Mumgarth took everything I was going to use, and wanted to approve this place over in Eagle Ridge, and he pretty much nailed it. The reason he picked that was for the same reason why we shouldn't have one down Glenwood Hills. What makes Glenwood Hills site an undesirable location? Currently, there is no off-street parking. The Schwer Park, the Schwer Park and Eagle Hills currently does. There's no restroom at the Glenwood Hills site, there was existing restrooms at the Schwer Place, at the Schwer Park. Schwer is a large park at 14 and a half acres. Glenwood Hills Park is maybe six acres, and probably 25 to 30% of that may be about, is heavily wooded, leaving us with a park that may be about four acres. But this wasn't included in any survey, so I don't have any real definite information for that. But to take this small neighborhood park and install a 3,200-square-foot splash pad, off-street parking, and a restroom doesn't leave us with much green space or parklift for other activities such as soccer and baseball. Shadow Lake currently has a splash pad, and sponsored by the SAC Federal Credit Union. Because the Shadow Lake Mall site lies on the southern edge of Papillion, it is a good distance from the original splash pad. The SAC Federal Credit Union splash pad already services residents in the southern sector of Papillion. For the next two years, we were told that the 84th Street entrance to our neighborhood will be under construction. Not only will this adversely affect the residents of Glenwood Hills, but it'll also impact the traffic flow and in and through our neighborhood, whether it be the residents or the splash pad users. How will the on-street parking affect Glenwood Hills? This will only lead to road construction due to the parking. We have our mailboxes curbside. As a United States Postal Service employee for 28 years and a past letter carrier, I was told by the Postal Service that it was, if there was any obstruction in front of a mailbox, whether it be snow or parked vehicles, I was not required to leave my vehicle to make that delivery. To conclude, I believe that the omission of the Glenwood Hills Park from the potential splash pad park location survey, it would be hard to justify to any of the residents of Papillion that the Glenwood Hills site meets all the criteria for a future site, and would be an adequate location for the feature, for this feature. In the future, I would hope that the city council would first meet with the local neighborhoods, and include their input before making any decisions on splash pad site locations. Neighborhoods are the backbone of the city, because what is a city other than a collection of neighborhoods? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? If we could hold side discussions, that'd be great, the sound carries quite a bit in the room. If you'd state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Donna Jordan, 2106 Maryland Drive. I'm speaking out against the splash pad, and it's something I feel very passionately about. I worked, everybody works, I worked all day, I closed, and in fact, it's my birthday, so I'm giving up my birthday so I can stand here in front of you to make, thank you.
Happy birthday.
To make these remarks, because I feel very strongly about it. And forgive me for reading, I did this at the end of a long, busy day, so. The sky is pink, or the ground is purple. Apparently, if you say these statements loud enough and with enough authority, we're supposed to believe them. But that doesn't make such softest remarks true. We have been told that people will park over by Shadow Lake and schlep their kids, their swimsuits, snacks, and drinks through the woods to the proposed Glenwood Hills splash pad. That isn't true. I know better than that. People and buses will park through our neighborhood and park on the streets. Have you seen our park? It sits on a corner. It's not safe to park on the corner like that. We have been told that it's not our park. If it isn't our park, then why does the sign say Glenwood Hills Neighborhood Park? We're the ones who love this park. We're the ones who use this park. If you go by any given day, you're going to see people of all ages using this park. We use it for basketball, we use it for football, all ages. We're not being inclusive. If you all want to come and use our park, you come. It's us, it's the apartments up the hill, it's Shadow Lake, we all use this park. It's our green space. I do want to commend the city council for promoting health. I'm, you know, going off my notes, I'm x-ray, I'm working on, masters a public health degree, so green space is very important to us. Okay, let me go back to my notes now. Like I said, I ad-libbed a little bit. Like I said, I ad-libbed a little bit. Okay, we have been told that we should be happy about this proposed splash pad, but people in our neighborhood, they actually canvassed Schwer Park neighborhood to ask them, "What do you think of this?" You know, "Hey, it sounds great." And they said, they complained about the traffic. So they were less than happy about the traffic. So why take a problem from one neighborhood and move it to ours? Is the traffic and congestion supposed to be half? That's sophist reasoning. Our park is smaller, and people from other areas will utilize the splash pad. We're being told that the splash pad needs to be built in a neighborhood. That argument makes sense. Yes, I have to admit, I like the Eagle Hill, Eagle Ridge plan very much. But does the splash pad need to be built in the neighborhood? Because the whole idea from the city council, I think, is foot traffic, but there's gonna be car traffic. Our neighborhood is not equipped to deal with this car traffic.
One minute.
We have houses, I'm sorry, how mu-
Just one minute.
Okay, we have houses all along our neighborhood. Doesn't it make more sense to build the splash pad someplace without the houses? Okay, since I only have a minute left, let me wrap this all up. It doesn't make sense to build a splash pad in Glenwood Hills. That park is in the floodplain, and we already have a problem with the standing water. Add more water, the wooded areas, and you build the splash, you increase the mosquito problem. I conclude my remarks by saying, please do not build a splash pad in Glenwood Hills. Let's just take this off completely. Thank you very much for listening to the ramblings of a tired woman.
Thank you. And happy birthday. Do we have any other comments?
My name's Andrew Perry. I live at 2008 Glenwood Avenue, and I'm not sure if I'm a proponent or opponent here. I'm against the splash pad-
That's okay.
...at Glenwood Hills Park. And I think everyone here agrees that the overcrowding at Schwer is the main driving force between Councilman Mumgarth's mission to have a second splash pad built, and I can absolutely respect that. And I don't think, I don't think anybody envisioned the degree of traffic and overcrowding problems that Schwer pad would bring with it. And the residents around, and the neighborhoods surrounding Schwer, they definitely have my sympathy, but my sympathy is only gonna go so far, and I'm not willing to sit quietly while we attempt to turn Glenwood Hills Park into a Schwer 2.0. The city learned a hard lesson, I think, when they placed that splash pad in Schwer, and it's, that placing a splash pad in an existing neighborhood park is a bad idea. Our existing neighborhood parks are not designed to deal with the crowds and the traffic, and they become overwhelmed. And I'm not trying to convince you that Papillion doesn't need a second splash pad, that's a whole separate argument. I just wanna convince you that, do not repeat the same mistakes of Schwer. If a splash pad in Schwer is a problem, then a splash pad in Glenwood Hills is going to be a problem. And placing a splash pad in Glenwood Hills will not fix the problems at Schwer. I think the best you can hope for is it's gonna spread the same problems between the two parks, and at worst, it's going to duplicate those problems as more people attend that than have been, have been avoiding before. You know, and even with the best-case scenario, this resolution, it's asking you to essentially dump Schwer Park's problems on Glenwood Hills Park, is to spread a mess around and not to clean it up. Now, you know, you may have been convinced, maybe this isn't the case, that all the arguments against placing a splash pad in Glenwood Hills are invalid and irrelevant, that Glenwood Hills is a great location, and I respectfully disagree. Mr. Mumgarth was kind enough to meet with some of us last week, and I definitely applaud him for doing that. I was walking into the lion's den for him. And that was an outstanding effort. And in that argument, in that meeting, he provided his criteria to us, and I assume that you all are aware of that. And I'm looking through those and trying to apply those to Glenwood Hills, and I think it speaks volumes about the suitability of the site. You know, one of those criteria was, it should be in the eastern or southern areas of town. And okay, I'll concede that one, you know, we can't fight geography, that fits us. Walking distance to the houses, and this one actually leaves me scratching my head a bit. If walking distance is important, then you have to assume that it should be equally important that those people who live within walking distance of the park actually want it. We brought a petition today, and in the short time that we've been organizing, and we have over, you know, over 100 signatures of neighbors that don't want this splash pad, so what is the point of placing a splash pad within walking distance of a neighborhood that says they don't want it? And also, a splash pad, you know, should have a nearby restroom. And right now, I guess, unless you count the trees, Glenwood Hills does not have any restrooms.
One minute.
Okay, thank you. And then also, nearby play equipment, and again, we have that along with pretty much every park in Papillion. And then also, it was reasonable construction cost, and this is a tough one. I mean, how do you know what the cost would be without seeing a real, a real plan? And what it really boils down to is, it's gonna be a $330,000 splash pad wherever you put it. So they're all gonna have essentially the same cost. And an adequate space, I think it was already addressed, but you know, Schwer Park, with, include that lake, is almost double the size of Glenwood Hills. So, you know, how does, if Schwer Park is overwhelmed, how, you know, how is that adequate space at Glenwood Hills? And then finally, the off-street parking, and unless things have changed in the last hour, you know, there are no off-street parking at Glenwood Hills Park. So it's on the right side of the city, and it has a playground, and I ask you, does that sound like a good location? Two criteria out of seven. So if you think the city needs a splash pad, please build one, but please build it in the right place. Don't shove it into a community park, or into a neighborhood park. Put it in a community park that's designed for the crowds of people and the traffic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You came to the meeting, and we had a very good discussion. Thank you. And can I ask you a question that some people, that might sound negative and mean-spirited, and I don't mean it that way, but you've pointed out some things that I think I'll hear from perhaps some Eagle Ridge residents. How, as a resident and a representative of Ward 4 where the Schwer Park Splash Pad is, how should I react when I hear people from other parts of the city, including residents of Glenwood Hills, say they really enjoyed coming to the Schwer Park Splash Pad and adding to the congestion there? They really liked it. It's something that they really like, splash pads. But then they're gonna go home and tell me, "But don't you dare bring that monstrosity anywhere near my house." How, as a representative and resident of that area around Schwer Park, should I react to that? I don't wanna react by saying, "Well, if you don't want it near your place, then stay out of my neighborhood." That isn't, that isn't the attitude that I want. But nonetheless, that seems to be a kind of a selfish criticism that I'm hearing. Can you help me out? How should I avoid seeing that as selfish?
Well, I don't think it's necessarily selfish. I mean, it's, it's an amenity, and it's admittedly a popular amenity. It's just, I think it's amenity in the wrong location, and I think it's just, you know, you have to be willing to admit that, you know, we made a bad call placing it there. And, I mean, yes, we should build and build splash pads, but I think, you know, just because we made one bad call and we're impacting a neighborhood negatively, doesn't mean we should just keep repeating that bad call.
You know-
I mean, it's very unfortunate, and I, if you made your proposal to shut it down-
Yeah.
-you'd, I would, I understand completely. I think, I think you're very justified in doing so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Thank you. Any council discussion? The motion on the floor is the one that was amended, which would, an affirmative vote or a yes vote would be to remove Glenwood Hills from consideration in the site selection process. Is that correct? Ms. Klug, I need your vote.
Six yeas, two nays. Nays by Councilmembers Mumgarth and Glover.
So that motion passes, and I believe that that action trumps the motion that you had made, Mr. Mumgarth, so we move on to the next topic. Okay. Item F7, Resolution R-130187. A resolution to authorize the use of restricted park funds in the amount of $50,000 for improvements at Veterans Park. Do we have motion to approve Resolution R-130187? Motion by Mr. Ingberg. Second by Mr. Florence. Do we have proponents? Do we have any opponents? Yes.
Pro.
And if you'd state your name for the record.
My name's Jerry Wohlheiser. I live at 810 Ritchie Lou Court in a thriving metropolis. I see a few-
Are you gonna be talking on the, on the pro item with the fields?
Yes.
That's actually the next item.
Oh, I'm s-
This one's Veterans Park. Nope, that's fine.
Okay.
You'll be up in just a second. Ms. Ingberg.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to thank, for the record, Mayor Black, and City Administrator Dan Hoynes, and, and also the Parks Director, Tony Gallin, for finding the restricted parks once we can start to seed to, to start to develop this park. If anybody's interested, this Friday at 10, at 10:00 a.m., we're actually going to dedicate renaming the park Veterans Park, and hopefully we'll have a 11-by-14 rendering of a concept changing that area to a park, tied to the veterans that served our country. So you're more than welcome to attend, and the concept, I'm sure we'll get out into the public, public realm as well. But thank you for assisting in getting that.
Thank you for all your work.
When was that again? What date is it?
November 8th, which is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. Any other council discussion?
Is that for making a first splash pad?
No.
No, but I could, no, but I'm certain the veterans would love to have the money for a splash pad to put in there.
Do we have any other council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F8, Resolution R-130188. A resolution to authorize the use of restricted park funds in the amount of $50,000 for construction of additional field space. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R-130188?
No.
Motion by Councilman Klug. Second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents?
Makes a long walk a second.
Sorry for the intrusion on that first one. I'm here representing pro, both baseball and softball, and the first thing I'd like to say is, with Dan and Lori, and all the staff that we've been working with the last couple months on getting this together, we couldn't ask for a better service, and really open to everything that we've been looking for. In the last few years, we've seen a large growth in our youth, baseball, and softball programs. This past season, we were unfortunately not able to take all the registrations that were available, because we did not have the field space to have additional teams. And that's what brought us to Dan and trying to get something going. You know, we came with an elaborate plan, and first thing Dan said was, "Ah, we may not have that much money." So we, we've talked about a lot of things. We have a couple of meetings coming up with, internally with the baseball and softball program people, to see if we have any funds available that would help extend what we're asking, or Dan is asking for here. But it would be a godsend to have everything done, and we look at a two- or three-, four- five-year program to bring what we need to the table, so that anybody in the city that wants to play baseball or softball has a place to play.
Appreciate that. I want to also give you a public thanks. Pro does a tremendous job for the city. In a lot of cities, baseball and softball are run by the city. Here, Pro's been doing it for years and years and years, and it's a volunteer effort. You've given a lot of time, you give a lot of hours, and given a lot of money, and that is a direct positive impact to the taxpayers, so really appreciate everything you guys do.
No problem. We're, we do it because that's what we wanna do for the kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is committee reports, and I don't think any have met. Do we have any comments from the floor? I believe we've got a couple of students here, unless they left because it got too long. Do we have some students?
They're still so high.
You gotta come up to the podium and introduce yourselves, and I'm assuming you're with Mr. Keller's class.
Yes.
They gotta come up.
I'm Tony.
It's part of the drill.
Are you great?
Mr. Keller makes it a requirement. Every one of them.
What do I say?
Just introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Ethan Lizzy, and I'm in Keller's honors government, sixth hour.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Ashlyn Gould, and I'm in Mr. Keller's fourth hour.
I'm Selena Lambly, and I'm in sixth hour with Keller.
I'm Samantha Murray, and I'm in Mr. Keller's fifth hour.
Thanks for coming out. And if you guys have any questions about some things that occurred tonight, or anything you need for your class, some of us will hang around after the meeting. Just go ahead and come on up. Any council comments? Just a few updates from the last couple of weeks. Mr. Hoynes, Ms. Myers, and I have continued to meet with some of the SIDs. We, as you, as you remember, we reached out to every single SID and invited them into a meeting just to have an active dialogue. A lot of that's about annexation, when are they ready, how do we think about annexation, and those types of things. Also attended the MAPPA annual meeting. Mr. Hoynes, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Limmin, and I met with Leader Construction and kick off the new Public Works facility, and we'll have a checkpoint meeting on that in a couple of weeks. Mr. Hoynes and I attended the tax modernization public hearing, as he mentioned. Mr. Arnie and I met at a conference call with representatives of the new Fairfield Inn to make sure that that's going right, and November 22nd will be the groundbreaking for the hotel. I also attended the Sarpy County Economic Development's annual meeting, the annual mayor's meeting, and that would have been with mayors from about five county region. Also attended the groundbreaking along with Ms. Klug for the New Goodwill. If people aren't aware, that's at 96th and 370, and they're bringing a nice design of their buildings to town. Also attended a two-half-day sessions with Allegiant Creighton. They're doing strategic planning as part of their merger process, and what's their plans for each of their facilities and programming. Mr. Hoynes, Mr. Halus, Mr. Bose, and Mr. Kimball and I had an introductory meeting with Warren Weaver, the new civil service commissioner. Mr. Schroeder and I, Mr. Schroeder's the president of the library board, interviewed for the library vacancies, and that was approved tonight. Thank you for your work on that board. Also attended Mayor, Senator Smith's town hall meeting along with Mayor Kindig, and we had about an equal number of representatives between Papillion and La Vista, so we had good discussion with the elected officials and their. Then Mr. Hoynes and I met with the United Cities in Springfield. Just a couple of reviews of, November's a busy month. If I can find my calendar, I wrote a few things down as reminders. Bear with me one second. Here we go. This week, November 7th at 4:00 p.m., Jimmy Johns is having their ribbon cutting at Midland's Place. They're already serving food, but that will be the first official ribbon cutting at Midland's Place. The next day, November 8th at 10:00 a.m., is the Veterans Park renaming ceremony. Monday, November 11th at 6:00 p.m., if you're interested, and I think there's still room, there's a Veterans Day dinner, and this is open to all veterans in the city. It's free, it's being sponsored by the La Vista Community Foundation. Reach out to them if you wanna reserve for that, and again, that's Monday, November 11th at 6:00 p.m. And then the next couple of Fridays, November 15th, Mr. Hoynes mentioned the fight for Jameis. And again, just a reminder of this, Jameis is three and a half years old. He is allergic to all food. There is one formula produced out of Europe that he can tolerate, and there's been some change in that formulation, and the formula that's been created after a certain expiration date, he cannot handle that either. So they're in a very dire situation to find a new process. And again, there's only about four or five kids in the United States that are faced with this, and so that is a fundraiser. Appreciate your support for them. And then November 22nd of Friday, we have two items. At 9:00 a.m. is the groundbreaking for the hotel. Marriott will be coming into, into town for that groundbreaking, and I believe some of the federal delegation will be here as well, and that's 9:00 a.m. on the 22nd. And then following that, at 11:30 on the 22nd, is a ribbon cutting for Firestone out at Shadow Lake. So please support the fundraiser for Jameis. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Glover. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
We are adjourned. Thank you.[1786.97]